I should say the December 20th School Committee Business Meeting. Okay, roll call Wayne Adams. Yep. Joanna?
Here.
Emily?
Yeah.
Dick?
Here.
Andy is not here. I'm here. Brian?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
And Deanna?
Here.
I'm sorry, four point. Four point two. Okay. And then can we all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance? Do you have a Pledge of Allegiance to apply to the United States of America? For which it stands, my nation and my God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I'd like to welcome new members Emily Dwyer, her new group, and Dick Hodges, our other new group member. So, welcome to the school committee. I believe you've met everybody at our subcommittee meeting. So, moving on to the minutes. I'd like to receive a motion to accept the minutes from the November 8, 2016. It was a special business meeting that was held. Any discussion? All in favor? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the business meeting of November 15, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the Business Finance and Operations Subcommittee Meeting from December 6, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the Teaching, Learning and Accountability Subcommittee Meeting from December 6, 2016?
So, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the Communications Subcommittee Meeting from December 6, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next is public comment. If anybody has any comments? None? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
Very good. And tonight, we're going to be talking about our 7 through 12 configuration as a possible solution for the building project. You'll recall that the MSBA has given us two different configurations to take a look at. And in preparation for our hearing in January, we wanted to take that conversation to a next step. And we actually have three students with us tonight. So, we have Lindsey Giampa. And Lindsey, if the three students, if you'd like to come up and sit here, we're just going to have a very informal conversation with you. We also have Seamus Burke. Seamus is a student over at Page, and he comes here to the high school for a class. And we have Emma Schut, and Emma is one of our art students. And all three students are here tonight to talk about their experience, give us a little bit of insight in what it's like to come to the high school and to be a part of the high school. And I know that for some parents, particularly at the elementary level, they express every year some concerns about the big kids and the little kids mixing together. And I think when you hear from Lindsey and Emma and Seamus tonight, you'll hear their version of how they feel about things, and it might give us a little bit more insight. So, that's what we're here about today, tonight. And I appreciate you all coming over. We also had a video that we're planning to provide as part of our hearing in January, and we were very close to having it for tonight. And so, with some technical difficulties, that was interrupted. We're going to go right to our students. And so, they're here to give you their perspective, and so, we can all ask questions. But I just thought, you know, maybe we could start with you, and you could just tell us a little bit about what's your interest. I know, Seamus, you, for instance, are in percussion. And I know Emma is an art student, and Lindsey, I think percussion too, right? So, let's start with percussion. So, Seamus, you're a sixth grader, is that right? Tell us, what's it like to come over here? And like, what's a sixth grader doing here, doing some percussion? What's that like?
It's fun. Yeah, I like it. My teacher's a pretty good band member next.
Uh huh.
The high schools are just not too much.
They're just tall, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're just pretty big, that's all. And so, why are you here, though? Like, why would you come all the way over here rather than at Page? What led to that?
Well, I had been in percussion for a couple days at Page School.
Uh huh.
And basically, friends had not joined in, and they were just starting out.
Oh.
Back to the same lesson.
Oh.
I was often not joining.
So, you may be a little advanced compared to the other kids who are just starting out? And how do you compare to the kids over here at the high school? Like, do you fit into what's going on?
Um, I guess so.
Yeah?
Yeah, they're very helpful.
Yeah.
And figuring things out.
Yeah. That's good. All right. So Lindsey, how about you? Tell us about your experience.
Well, like, coming from last year in a band where we played with, like, one snare drum and a little, like, trumpet thing, it was really, like, neat coming and seeing, like, the whole drum set and these big, like, nice marimbas and vibraphones, just, like, sitting there waiting for you to play.
Uh huh.
And then, like, when we finally got to, like, play them, it was, like, so cool, like, they just sounded so much, like, better than what we were, like, used to playing.
Uh huh, uh huh. And you know, that's one of the things, one of the benefits, that could be in store for our students at the younger level. When we combine levels, like, for instance, the grade 7 through 12, the younger students would have access to sort of like the big boy toys, if you want to consider it. And for students like Seamus and Lindsey, the more advanced instrumentation is really something that they look forward to, right? Yeah. And also, that the students are at a different level, and so, you can find better matches with the level of your ability, right? Yeah. All right. So, Emma, how about you? Tell us about art.
Um, it's good. It's not much different than, like, having a class at the middle school, just eighth graders.
Uh huh.
Except for the high school teacher. It's just.
Uh huh. So, you're not really noticing a big difference? It's more, oh, wow, you're going to get recorded and everything. That's great. So, it's just like having a regular middle school class. It's not any different than a class you'd expect, is that right?
No.
Yeah?
It's fun.
What are some of the things that you're learning?
Um, well, we did poster art for when Savadu came, and we did clay making, so I didn't, I mean, like ornaments for Christmas.
Yeah.
And a sign, and we did a project called This I Believe, so we made something out of something we believe in.
Uh huh. Oh, that's good. So, you're getting high school credit, am I right, for the art class?
I'm not sure. I think I might be.
I think you are. I think you have. I think you have that option.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's an option that you have. So, when our middle schoolers take an advanced class, like, for instance, Emma's taking the ninth grade class, she has the option of taking that for credit and actually having high school credit before she even becomes a high school student. So, that's pretty good.
Yeah, a couple of my classes are like that.
Yeah, yeah. What are your other classes?
Um, I have English, accelerated English, and algebra, and accelerated science.
Yeah, exactly. So, if you think about Emma's transcript, when she comes here, she's likely to have three classes that she's already got credit for. So, it's almost like coming in as a freshman and a half. You know, you're already halfway to sophomore status, right? Wow, that's really great. So, what are some of the other benefits? Like, do you see the other high school students as a benefit to being here, or is it intimidating to you? Like, what's that like?
Um, it's not really intimidating, because I know some of the people.
Oh.
But I don't see much high schoolers that often, but, yeah.
So, you travel as a cohort, like, your whole art class or your, is your art class here or at the middle school?
It's here.
Here. So, do you travel together? You know, you have only your eighth grade peers in your art classes, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. How about algebra, and how about English? Still eighth graders, but you have the ninth grade credit.
Yeah, those are at the middle school, though.
Yeah, and those are at the middle school. So, you have to travel back and forth?
Yeah.
Is that right? So, what's that like?
All the far.
When you have to travel, like, recently, it snowed.
Um, it's okay. I would rather not.
Good boots.
Yeah.
Yeah, "I would rather not" would be a good idea.
Yeah. I mean, I don't really mind. I have a jacket, so it's okay.
Yeah. Yeah. But if you didn't have to, it would be a benefit, right?
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, Seamus, can you tell us a little bit more about your experience here? And when you first came in, what was it like when you had to come here as a, you know, for your first time with the high school? Were you nervous about that?
Uh, yeah. I was nervous, actually.
What was on your mind when, what made you nervous?
Um, I don't know. Nervous of not being able to play as well.
Uh huh.
I would love to be able to play at that level.
And did that go away pretty quickly? Yeah, that's nice. Yeah, very good. And how about for percussion? You just fit right in with everybody, and the instrumentation, not a big deal?
Um, yeah, not much.
Yeah, and Lindsey too? Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, do you have some friends who are now older than you because of the experience?
Um, yeah, some people.
Some people you consider to be, you know, you talk with them, and, yeah?
Yeah, we, uh, we're not the best friends we ever talked to often, but.
Yeah.
But when I see them around, we can say hi.
Yeah, well, that's good. And Lindsey, how about you too?
Yeah, um, I, like, met people that I wouldn't have met if I didn't take that class, like, the eighth graders in that class.
Yeah.
They're all really nice, and, like, they don't talk to the seventh graders, like, they don't treat us like we're younger than them.
Yeah.
So.
So, being seventh grader in an older class, everybody's just kids, and you just get along. Yeah, okay. Anybody else have any questions for them? You know, about their experience, or some of the things, you know, what other parents might be thinking? What would you advise to other kids or other parents? Because there are parents who are nervous about their children, you know, having this experience.
I don't know about other programs, but we share everyone's bad experiences very well.
Yeah. So, nothing to worry about there?
Not at all.
No.
So, I have a question. So, some of you are, two of you are at the middle school right now, right? So, do you think it would be better to have a brand-new building for 7 through 12, or just to have a new building for 9 through 12?
I would say just 9 through 12.
9 through 12?
Yeah.
And why is that?
I mean, it would be nice to have a new building for everyone, but I feel good, unless it's a really, really big school, I feel it could get crowded, because I know my grade is, like, really big.
Okay.
So, if all the grades were the same sizes, like, you'd grade them, it might get a little big sometimes.
Might feel big. Okay.
Yeah. That would be something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
If it were to happen. You know, sometimes these schools that combine 7 through 12, they have a whole separate area for middle schoolers. So, you would have maybe access to the state of the auditorium, or gym, or cafeteria, or some of the music or art kinds of venues. But typically, they're set aside.
That's how it is set up in Manchester Essex. They have all the sixes and sevens, the eighth graders have three floors, like, till when you first come in, all separate. And then, the auditorium, and the couple of gyms, and all of the shared cafeteria, all that stuff where you would share the music, and all of that stuff is in the middle. And then, the high school, you have to, like, go down a little hallway on the other left end, and they've got three floors, so it's not like everything's just.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
It's also dangerous, is that after the day class, or you stand, is Lindsey and all the other seventh graders, they have to walk back to the room, which sometimes they'd be, like, late for class.
Uh huh.
But I think, because Mr. Kelly's a little bit separate, like, he, like, he has this help, like, semantically, especially with, like, smelling. Or, and I think if it was one school together, we would have had, it's not a big difference, but a little bit more time.
Yeah. It would be nice not to have to go outside into the weather. Yeah, definitely. All right. Anybody else? Any questions? So, we thought it would be a good idea if you all would come back again in January. Would you do that for us? Have you been invited to do that already? No, you have not? So, this is a surprise.
[laughing]
So, if you can, it would be a big help if you would come back in January, and we would have a video, and we would go through the same kind of talk. We may have other parents who are here in January, and it would be helpful for them to hear, like, what your experiences are. So, it's good for us all to hear, but if we had parents who were actually here, I think it would help to answer some of their questions, too. So, no hard feelings if you can't, but if you can, we really appreciated you tonight, and it would, I think it would be helpful again in January. We're going to be meeting on the 17th, and just about the same timeframe. And so, I'll make sure that Mr. Kelly and Mr. Seymour talk with you and your parents about that, see what we can get together, okay? All right. Well, thanks so much for coming tonight. It was a big help to us, and we'll see you again if we can in January, okay? All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the superintendent's report?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the next item on the business is under new business. It's donation to the Westernbury PTO. So, the donation out is $21,216, and it is, um, the Westernbury PTO to the Page School for emergency safety backpacks, direct action medical instruments, useless toys and equipment, pili-gi, screening books and shirts, supplies for the steam room, brain pop gym subscription, classroom notebooks, and grade five, 32 chrome books with one card, 12 chrome books with one card, six side pads, and $50 for apps. So, can I receive a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Good.
That's a great question. It's wonderful. The next item on the agenda is the Whittier School Committee Merrill Mac Vacancies. So, according to the regional agreement, every three years, each of the towns come up for representative, for the representative from each of the towns, the Whittier region. So, we have to advertise the vacancies, and it's my understanding, the current member that's on, Paul Tucker, has sent in a letter of interest, but we also need to advertise it. And I was going to request Jocelise to advertise, but she's not here, so.
Well, we can do that, though, from my office.
Okay. And so, if anybody, you know, from Merrill Mac is also interested?
And what timeframe should we use?
I would say by our next meeting, our January meeting.
Except for the January meeting, is that going to be the?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
So, can we do a portion of the January meeting as a business meeting as well as public hearing?
I think that would be okay.
Well, expiration isn't until March 2017, so we.
Yeah, we could go on even.
Push it to February.
So, we could do it for the February meeting?
Yeah.
Would that be all right? So, how about by the end of January, we have whatever, you know, letters are coming in?
Letters of interest by the end of January?
Yeah, and that would give us time to get them all to you, and, yeah. Sandra Wright?
So, I don't need a, I don't need a vote for that.
No, we'll just do it.
The next item on the agenda is vacancies for school committee subcommittees. So, these are quite the broadened seats that, so the first one we'll go to is the Business Finance Operations, Human Resources, and Communications. So, there's two vacancies, one was by Jack Colet, and the other one was from Kentucky Line. And so, we need to fill those seats. So, we have Emily, and we have to. So, we have Business and Finance. Are either one of you interested in that?
Also sign your ass.
This is budget.
It's just, it's just going over what.
I'll go ahead with that.
The bills we pay and everything.
Okay. Did you hear?
Dick said he'd do it.
Dick said he'd do it.
Okay. Just put me where you think I can help.
And the next one is Human Resources.
So, we sent to you, you were in, sent to you, was it yesterday?
This time.
A couple days ago.
Monday.
Brief description of what the, which one of the subcommittees does. So, do you, do you have any interest in Human Resources?
Emily?
Emily? And the first, and Emily, Doc was on that committee, and he chaired that committee. And I know you knew, but it's not an overwhelming position. Okay.
We'll help you out.
It'll help you out.
Help you all.
Yeah.
Okay. And the last one is the Communications Subcommittee. Dr. Romano? Dick? I'm sorry, Dick Romano.
I have a question.
Okay.
About that, so it's what, so, I mean, so I obviously read the descriptions. What type of time commitment are you talking about for each?
We typically schedule these at a half-hour interval on the same night.
Right. Yeah, no, I, I don't mean in terms of the meetings, but it means.
There hasn't been a lot of time commitment for any of the subcommittees.
Andy does most.
Outside of.
I just don't want to.
Andy, Andy does most of it.
Yeah.
I just don't want to. Over and stuff, you know?
I think he does most of it.
Is that something you're interested in? So, it's.
Those two meetings are generally held pretty close to each other, so it's.
Pretty back-to-back.
Yeah. So, Human Resources goes right into Communications. So, as far as the meeting time, you'd be here for a total of one hour on the subcommittee night.
Yeah.
But outside of the subcommittee meeting, there's not a big commitment.
Right.
Really not anyway.
Okay.
It pays better for the chairman.
You get twice as much.
Double zero instead of zero.
I believe it.
Much grief.
So, the next vacancy is, let me see here, for the office, oh, sorry, sorry. For the vacancy of the School Building Committee. So, this one, so Doc was on the Kentucky Regional School Committee, created a vacancy for a growing representative to serve on the School Building Committee, and a appointment is required to fill the vacancy. For the changes in the composition of the School Building Committee needs to be provided to the MSBA for approval. So, we need somebody to serve on this. I'm on the committee already as the chair, so I can't serve in all capacities.
Dick.
And this person will have a vote.
All right, you can, you can put, but before I say yes, you need to realize that my commitment is to May. I haven't made any other decisions beyond May. So, if that's going to help you out, I'm more than happy to take that committee.
I'm also interested in that position. I, I don't, because I have a lot of experience in that regard, but I definitely plan on running again for the seat in the spring. So, in terms of that piece continuity, I don't have the experience.
No, that might, that might be, in terms of the continuity, I would vote for you myself.
Hopefully, you can use your expertise to this.
You can call me.
So, anybody can come to the, anybody can come to the MSBA meetings, just, you know, just the people that are approved have a vote. So, give them some more welcome to the MSBA.
Okay.
For ideal support.
Mm-hmm.
So, does everybody?
We don't vote communication.
Should we do the vote on this?
Emily?
Nope. She's in point.
Okay, so we'll sign. Okay, thank you. And then, the last one was the Treasury, the Assistant Treasurer seat on the school committee. So, there's Chair, and there's Vice Chair, and there's Secretary, and there's also an Assistant Treasurer seat, which you can go by growing up.
Well, maybe since Dick is on the finance, maybe this would be a good fit for him.
And it's only till.
And this goes until the election anyways.
The fact that I can balance my checkbook doesn't make me a CPA.
But we have a regular treasurer that does all that. You're just in case we fire her.
I don't know. There's actually anything to do there.
Yeah, there isn't anything to do.
All right, let me write Dick down.
There we go.
That requires a vote.
That would require a vote.
That's required a vote.
Oh, that requires a vote, yes.
Okay, so I should make a motion to appoint Dick Hodges to be position of Assistant Treasurer?
I'll second.
Okay, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thanks.
Thanks, thanks a lot.
What's for Communications?
So, the next item on the agenda is to appoint.
Communications?
A public records officer.
She's going to do Human Resources.
So, on June 3, 2016, the Governor Charlie Baker signed into Chapter 121 of the Act of 2016 entitled An Act to Approve Public Records, which makes extensive changes to the Massachusetts Public Records, while particularly in terms of the procedure for responding to requests and obligations of the public entities in facilitating the availability of information. The changes under this legislation go into effect January 1st, 2017.
I make a motion that that, that officer be appointed to, I mean, made to the superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one question. It's just, is it the Public Records Officer, or is it the Records Access Officer? Because we have it written two different ways.
We do. So, it's the Records Access Officer, RAO, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's the responsibility exactly?
It makes sure that anybody who requests public records gets it in a timely way. That's essentially what it is. And that's currently what I do already. So, the law says that we have to put it on our website and make sure everybody knows that I'm the person who they request records from.
Any other discussion? I'm seeing any, all in favor. The next item on the agenda is fiscal year 18 budget update and potential schedule. Would you like to?[1686.41] Greg, would you like to jump in, please?
Sure. Historically, at least since I've been here, the initial budget is handed out at the business meeting in January. That would be this year, January 17. I fully expect that to be the case again. You'll get your budget handout books that night. I know it's a busy night with the public hearing and all that, but you'll just be getting a copy of the budget book. At the same time, they'll be distributed to the Finance Committees and things of the towns. Typically, at this point, I'm handing you a spending plan more than a budget, but the simple fact is we don't know our revenue stream yet because the governor's budget hasn't been submitted, all these things. So technically, what I do is I'll hand you a budget, and usually somewhere, it's running a deficit somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $400,000 at this point, and we begin to work off of that schedule as we go forward. But at least by giving it out in time, people can see where the spending part of it's coming from. As we go through the process, we'll make adjustments as we need, as information comes in, whether it be from district regional retirement on our bills, from health insurance updates from the GIC, again, the governor's budgets, talking to the Finance Directors on what they can and can't afford, if anything, over two and a half. Little things like that will begin the tweaking process going through. Obviously, it's due by regional agreement 45 days before the last, the first town meeting. All the town meetings are in April. We like to get them, their assessment and all these things prior to that. We usually try to either approve it at the business meeting in February or the, we schedule a special one in addition to the Subcommittee meetings in the first week of March that we can produce and get their bills over to them so they can work on their budgets as well. Additionally, for timeframes, we're also starting to get requests from the towns to visit them, their Finance Committees, their selectmen and things, as they go through their budget process. Now typically, obviously, this is something we want the School Committee to know about. Sometimes the full committee likes to tag along to those, sometimes just the members of that particular community like to go, and sometimes it's just Jeff and I will be the ones who go. But what we'd like to also is permission to accept those invitations as they come and let you know as we accept them so you can have the ability to show up and tag along and see the process if you'd like to or not. So that seems to be how I think we'll probably just follow that same track that we've always followed it, as long as everybody's okay with that, no issues.
So at the February Subcommittee meeting, the Finance Subcommittee meeting on the 7th...
Well, they'll have had it for now, two, little over two and a half weeks, probably maybe almost three. So I'll start fielding questions from them. But again, the full committee has this budget, and the full committee is going to vote on it. So by all means, at that Subcommittee meeting, if you want to show up and ask questions, if you have questions before that, by all means, let me know.
When do we usually schedule the hearing, the public hearing, Greg?
We usually do the public, lately, we've done the public hearing and approved the budget on the same night, only because there haven't been any overrides really attached to them or anything like that going forward. We've kept it in a realm of what we can do. I mean, right now, the draft budget itself is about a 2.06% increase over this year. Like I said, it's a little out of balance, but even if you found the funding source, it wouldn't go past 2.5%. So it's closer than it usually is. So of course, we also have a union contract for negotiating as well, as you all know. So a lot of things will happen, but I can see running either the public hearing, depending on, you have to give two weeks' notice to a public hearing, so at the Subcommittee level, we can determine if you want to make it for February or do it the Subcommittee meeting night in March, whether you want to do the public hearing, but we don't really need them to know that right now.
Okay. It's scheduled, it's scheduled in the calendar that the School Committee approved in September for the year, for the last Tuesday in February.
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing.
Change it, but that's what it is scheduled on.
But you don't have to approve the budget, you can still go another, to Subcommittee meeting night when everybody's here for Subcommittee.
In March, that first March meeting?
Yeah, you could do it, if you don't, if everybody's fine, we can approve it right then in February.
All right.
We will have all the information by then.
Okay, so the February Business Meeting is going to be on the 28th, due to school vacation, the week of the 28th.
Yeah.
Questions back on the line?
Oh, it does, then we probably should do it that night.
Great.
Is everybody all set with that? Any other questions? So the next item on the agenda is drinking water.
Okay.
Dr. Romano, would you like to speak on this?
I think so. So today, I distributed, and you have it in front of you, our latest update from the district. And today, Greg and I, Greg Haddon and I, met with local Boards of Health agents, and we went over our plan for addressing the needs in the district. Generally speaking, we're going to be shutting off some water supplies to sinks that no longer are needed, and we're going to be repairing, replacing piping and fixtures that we're going to try to reuse. And before we put anything back in service, we're going to be testing to make sure it's okay. So that's kind of the long and the short of it. I did publish out, too, the information about the standard that we use, the plumbing standard that we're using. And although the lead level is something everybody's concerned about, lead is in the piping that we use, the copper pipe that we use, because without it, it wouldn't be at all flexible or malleable. So it's not about having no lead in the piping, that's not a possibility, but it is about following the standard. And so whatever the piping is or whatever the fixtures are, these little codes that I provided in the standard are labeled when you purchase them, and so you can be assured that they follow, you know, the recommendations, the guidelines that we have. So we, as a district, we are pretty fortunate in only having a couple of different fixtures at each school that, you know, we have to take action on. And I want to emphasize that it's not the whole water supply that we're taking action on, it's just a couple of fixtures at each school. In the case of the middle school, for instance, the home ec area that we used to use, we don't use that as a home ec area anymore, the curriculum is different. And so areas like that will be just capped off, and maybe we'll have one running sink like we do in other classrooms, not four or not six, you know, whatever the case is. So I don't know if any of you have questions. I've received a couple of emails and responded to parents, and I think generally, people are pretty happy with the information that they've received, and everybody has been, you know, great. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Once you switch everything out, are we going to retest just to make sure the levels are...
You do that faucet by faucet. So if you have an actionable item on one faucet, you switch out the piping, and then you test that faucet again, and then you don't bring it back online until it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're not going to do a whole building again because of one faucet, but you would do faucet by faucet. And as we move forward, plumbing changes that we might make in the schools, not this year, but in two years or five years, whenever you make those plumbing changes, we would again do the test, send in the test results, verify that that fixture is okay before we bring it back online.
What agency provides the standards that we're following?
Yeah, there are certain labs, the state has identified for us to use, and so we bring our water supply to the lab that is affiliated with the state. So I don't have a list with me right here, Dick.
Okay. I was just curious, because the Boston schools are dropping like flies. I mean, there's just lead everywhere, and it makes me nervous when anyone says "an acceptable level of lead," or "an acceptable level of mercury," or "those are scary words to me."
Yeah, you know, part of the fear factor, I think, is pretty explainable. There's not, it's not a health standard that they're following, it's not like there's a level of lead that is toxic to you that we're talking about, it's an industry standard that we're talking about. So we only have that industry standard to go by, and of course, nobody wants extra lead in their diet, you know, in their body, but lead is something that you're exposed to in lots of different ways. And, you know, I think the Massachusetts information that I distributed about lead in drinking water was helpful because I was getting questions about, should I bring my child to the doctor, as an example? And by washing your hands or, you know, having some exposure to lead in drinking water, it doesn't, you know, contaminate you, it's hard to get through your skin, but drinking it is certainly not something that we want people to be doing. So, you know, there is a certain level of nervousness, I think, that's pretty explainable, you know, for this sort of thing. So that's all I have.
Any other questions? So the next item on the agenda, discussing approval of Thought Exchange.
Yeah, so Thought Exchange has been under consideration as a possible electronic tool to use to gather information from the community, in particular about the building project, the upcoming building project. And I think we've come to a point now in our discussion where we're ready to move forward with that, so I just wanted to get your approval to move forward. With that approval, what I would do is explore alternatives, get quotes, and, you know, try to wrap things up with them. There is a bid requirement that's involved with this, and, you know, we're estimated at about $14,000 for a year of service, so I'll be talking with other companies to see where they are. I've done that a little bit already. And Thought Exchange sort of has a little niche in that they not only provide you with the product, but they also help you analyze the data. And what Andy was really sensitive to is he didn't want us to just have a product and then have all that data dumped in my office to be analyzed. He saw that as not a doable solution. So that's one of the benefits, I think, of the Thought Exchange, is that they actually do a lot of the behind-the-scenes action and helps make sense of all the data that comes in. So, you know, if you all agree, I'll move forward with it, and we'll see where it goes. So I think, is it down for a vote?
No, it's not. On the agenda, it's just discuss and approve?
Yeah, discuss and approve. So if you'd like to approve that, I'll move forward with it, and I can't guarantee that they'll be the lowest bid or that, you know, we'll be able to move forward in that way, but I think everything's pointing in a good direction.
So what happens if there aren't three companies in the United States that actually provide this service?
Well, I just have to get quotes.
Okay.
So for instance, if I call a company and they say, well, we do a certain portion of it, but not the whole thing, then I write that down, and I move on.
Okay.
So Thought Exchange, based on what you've shared with us, really has the edge because of the analytical feature?
That's right.
Okay, and it would seem not worthwhile, even if there was a lower bid, because if there's a lower bid and you're not getting any analysis, then I think it's a lose.
Yeah, so when I talk with people on the phone, I make sure that I cover what the specs are, what my requirements are. So for instance, I might say, well, do you also provide some analysis and support? And a company might say yes or no, and, you know, I can't move in a direction that just gives me the tool and then empties data into my office, that's not going to be a help.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so can I receive a motion to move forward for Dr. Mulqueen to solicit the thoughts for, you know, Thought Exchange?
Yeah, I think maybe the proposed motion would be to move forward with securing a tool for community conversation, you know, a platform for community conversation.
I have one question. Will the Building Committee, you know, obviously this is going to be used for new high school community management, will we be able to use that information as well, like, will we have access to all that information?
Yeah, so we'll be able to generate that information and share it with everybody, you know, that's the whole idea behind this.
Okay. So the MSBA Subcommittee?
Yep.
Okay, we'll have access to it?
Yeah, definitely.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Okay, thanks.
The next item on the agenda is the District Capacity Building Plan, progress report, please.
Yeah, usually I come in January, and I just thought I would talk to you about where we are with our initiatives this year. So I provided to you the snapshot of our whole plan. Over at the right side, you'll see that there are 10 items that are listed as strategic initiatives, and I'm just going to go through those and let you know, are we on target? Is something delayed? You know, where are we with each of those different items? And I'm going to start with item number 10. This is the biggest item that we have on, one of two big items that we have for the upcoming year, for this year. Not the upcoming year, this year. So it's the high school project, and it takes priority over everything else that's listed here. And right now, not only are we on target, we're about three months ahead of time, and that's due to a couple of different things, but the good news is that we're moving at a very quick pace, faster than the time allocation that the MSBA provided to us. And so that's not only on track, but it's ahead by about three months. Now, I'm going to go way up to the top. This is our other really important item, and that's the curriculum renewal process, and that's on target as well. We have each of our principals with a team. Jonathan Seymour is heading up Social Studies, Ken Kelly, Mathematics, Dustin Gray, Science and Technology, Brendan Keenan, and Mike Jarvis, Guidance, PE, and Wellness. Rob Harris is helping, remember, Rob is working part-time in the district, Rob is helping with Visual and Performing Arts, and Russ Marino and I are working on English Language Arts and World Languages. And in October, November, and December, we had a particular flow that we were following, and I think everybody is pretty much on target with that. We check in every week or thereabouts at my administrative meetings, and, you know, so I'm pretty confident that we're on track there.
Now, Ed, when you all kind of come to a conclusion on each curriculum, will you come to the Subcommittee or the whole committee?
Yeah, I report at the Subcommittee level. I haven't done that yet, and that may be a good topic for us for the next Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Subcommittee. Yeah. So I can do a progress report, you know?
That'd be great.
That would be good. Number two is really to develop a world language course for elementary school, and though this has taken a little bit of a backseat so far, the World Language Department Chair, Linda Hackett, has really been working kind of in the wings, and she's been terrific. So I feel like we're on target, and in January, we'll get back on track, you know, with development of a elementary curriculum.
How low are you thinking of going in terms of grade?
Well, we want it to connect with middle and high school, so I'm thinking we're going to back down through sixth grade as far as we can. There's a requirement for the IB school to have it for their certification, and IB has to have it included in grades two through six. I think we're going to get into, we're going to be able to accommodate the two through six at the IB school, and we'll see how far down we can get in the other schools as well. Over time, this is going to develop, so the first phase of this won't be the last phase. We're going to have to develop this and grow it over time, okay? But I'm pretty confident we're going to be able to start something in each of the elementary schools next year.
Bless you, bless you.
Under strategic objective number two, I participate in instructional rounds pretty regularly at the schools, and so that's just continuing on. I've been doing that for about four years now. So that's on target. Strengthening staffing patterns to support co-teaching. We've been taking, the principals and I have been taking a really strong look at the schedule that we have, particularly at the elementary schools, and trying to distinguish the core courses and the core blocks of time so they're not interrupted. You remember last year, we made a change that went into effect this year where kids taking instrumental classes weren't being pulled out of math and English Language Arts, that sort of thing. We want to do it, we'll take another step where students who are receiving specialized supports are being taken out less frequently from core subject time, and we have a block that's dedicated to it. So the concept is to get core and more, not a replacement for the core content. So we're working on that now. Once we have the schedule, then we'll resource the schedule with staffing, and we're pretty close to, you know, coming to completion with that. It has to be ready for the budget, so we're working in tandem with Greg on that.
So what I'm taking from this, and maybe I'm wrong, so please correct me.
Yeah.
If you have a child at the elementary level that's receiving speech OT and PT services on that, they're not being, unless it's a language-based program, they're not being pulled out of their core classes or services, there's a block?
That's where we're headed toward.
So what is happening with typical students that are not, what are they doing first? What is the block?
So the block would be providing every student with the next step that they need. So if you're ahead of the curve, let's say, you'd still be accelerated, you'd be getting something more. So every student would get something more, not just somebody who needs...
So everybody's receiving something of that.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so what is it like, other kids that just have a free hour?
No, it's not free time.
So is it sort of like a response to intervention period?
Yeah, only it's not a deficit model where response to intervention might be looked at as if you aren't yet, you know, achieving at a... you aren't yet, you know, achieving at a, at the classroom level, that you get something. This would be for every student to get something more.
Yeah, but I think many schools are doing it that way, because you have to have that block. And then the same question comes up, like Lisa asked, "Well, what about my kid who's on grade level, or above grade level?" So...
That's right. I thought I was, I thought I was speaking up nice and loud. Is it Lisa? All right, thanks for the cue.
Can I ask you a question about that? So does that mean that you and the principals are, like, right now, working on next year, the elementary schedule to be given to each teacher, so that everybody can then work all of that?
Yeah.
Out, in terms of their core instruction, as well as their extra?
Yeah, not, so I wouldn't be doing it for each teacher, but it would be aligning a school's schedule, and principals would be putting together team schedules, and then giving teachers their scheduling, right?
Can I just make, so one of the things that you've done this year, my sixth grade daughter benefited from, or is part of, so she has banned, she no longer gets pulled out during math, or SNAP, or whatever. So she's happier about that. I'm wondering if you're going to be getting some feedback, and I would suggest getting feedback from the students? Because the way that Paige, I don't know if Bagnell's the same way, she doesn't, she doesn't have every special, so she doesn't go to the library. She doesn't like not going to the library. She could go anytime she wanted, I'm sure her teacher would bring her down and let her get those, whatever. But she definitely has some, some good thoughts about what isn't working. And one of the things is, because she doesn't have libraries, sometimes library kids go to art, and they get to get ahead on projects. So there's all these things happening? At the kid level? That I don't know if it's necessarily making it up to the teacher, or the administrator, with regard to how, you know, from a parent's point of view, I think it's working. But then she definitely has definite opinions about it, I'm sure some of the other students do as well.
Yeah, so I can, I can certainly make sure that we check in with our students. But what we, what I want to make sure is that we have a schedule that makes things educationally? And then we can check in to make sure that students understand what's going on, how it's going on, and that we're also not fine tuning things in a way that will sabotage what we think is, is good, right?
Right, and that's what I think, there needs to be some reflection on that, or maybe there needs to be changes through the year to that. Because I know she's in the STEAM innovation, I forget what it's called. So, so I guess my other thing would be then, when you're implementing this for the special education services, maybe that same thing needs to be thought about at the student level? Because it might work at the adult level, but then whatever's happening in that classroom, if the student's pulled out during that time, that might be fun work, and they want to, so I think there's a lot from the student level that sometimes isn't taken into consideration.
Sure, yeah, that's a good thought.
But that's also how, if you make it a block, like a period during the day, like PE would be a period, or ELA, or Spanish?
That's right.
Then you, they aren't, then everyone is getting what they need during that time, and it's not one kid missing something that everybody else is getting.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Because that's how we run it, is a, it's like a period in our day. So it's not like, some of my kids are going to music, and some of them are having wind time. Everybody's having what they need during that half an hour block.
Yeah, that's what we're trying for. So definitely, over time, we're going to have to refine it. But right now, it doesn't make sense that students would be interrupted from math, or from ELA, if that's also where you need them to get stronger.
Right, for sure.
All right, let's see. Implementing systematic adaptive assessments, I think we're on target with that. Rob Harrison scheduled an appointment for principals and, and myself with an assessment system that's focused on the quantiles and the Letzile framework. And so we'll see how that goes. I had hoped to get that in faster than I could, but we've had multiple things going on this year, and this is as quick as I could do it. So maybe for either the spring or next year. Using data-driven early warning systems, that's what we implemented at the beginning of this year. So not only are we on target, but I think we're, we're pretty expert now at, at getting that underway. So that's a, a good benefit. Under strategic objective number three, strengthening and expanding innovation schools. We've done a lot of increases in the partnerships. Merrimack College is, like, very close to approving and partnering with us for dual credit, where our teachers are teaching the course, and the kids in the course actually get college credit. There's a partnership with Chesterton in Groveland with Bagnell for the design and engineering. That's new and just getting underway. The IB certification is progressing, Russ is doing a great job with that. We're on track for the STEAM coordinator in the budget. You know, we have a part-time coordinator shared between Paige and Bagnell. And I'm confident that we can get the full-time STEAM position for both schools next year. And the elementary language program, I'm confident that we can get that underway next year, too. And number four, strengthening human resources, policy, systems, and procedures. This has really taken a pretty big backseat. So as the lead in drinking water, and the school building project, and other things have come my way, this is the thing that I've shifted back. So I'll try to get back on track with this as we get into the spring. I think the budget's about to now come forward, so this is going to have to wait until the budget really gets completed. And then, let's see. And then number nine, the assistant superintendent position, we all talked about that last year. And I'm pretty confident we can get that into the budget for this year. So that's, you can anticipate seeing that. So generally speaking, I think we're doing a pretty good job. We have a pretty ambitious agenda. And I think the, besides the, the policies and the human resources element, I think we're pretty much on, on target for where we need to be. So I'm happy to answer any other questions for you, but I think we're doing a pretty good job so far. And the building project has certainly got my attention, you know, as a priority.
Now, were these the district goals in general?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a specific set of goals? As, I mean, I came in in May, so I don't know.
Yeah, my goals are aligned to the district goals, so I'm always trying to accomplish the work that will get done at this level. So you can judge me by how well we do here. And I think as, when Dick came in to meet with me, and I think Emily, too, I explained that I set pretty ambitious, a, a, a pretty ambitious agenda. And if I don't accomplish it, I don't feel too bad, because I'd rather be overreaching and accomplishing quite a bit than doing something safe and not really getting anything done. So I'm, like, even given that we're a little bit behind in one area, I'm feeling pretty good right now about what, how much we're getting accomplished.
Originally, it was like 21 items on?
Yeah, my first year, if you remember, we had like 21 items. And we've cut back a little bit from that.
Can I ask you a question about the data-driven early warning system? To support social, emotional needs?
Yeah.
What, what system are, is?
We, we have three different avenues at our schools, where teams of teachers are forwarding concerns about students. So we don't wait for somebody to fall down before we have a concern.
Right, I was, I was understanding this in a different way. So you're using sort of like a...
Like an IST team?
Right, and it's your teacher assistants, that kind of not, you're not using a screening system that's looking at the social, emotional needs of all the kids?
But we do track now, so when a student's name comes forward, we do track them through. We don't just say, "Oh, Emily, this week," and then we forget about Emily. So we do track through and make sure that we don't lose track.
Now, and this encompasses also the kids. Again, like, the, the kids who are getting flagged for bothering other children and...
Yeah, or those who are being bothered. So it's not just the, typically, we'd say, oh...
Good, so you're tracking both.
Oh, Deana bothered somebody at recess, we're going to take a look at Deana. We also look at who was being bothered, and we make sure we attend there, too.
Right.
Any other questions? We have a couple of small donations I just wanted to mention. They do not need approval. So one of them was for, from the Merrimack School PTO, for $3,864.56 for the purchase of 14 Chromebooks, which will benefit the fifth and sixth graders of the Donio School. Another one is from the Kentucky Arts Foundation, grant for $250 to help sixth, grade six attend the performance of a Christmas carol at the North Shore Music Theater. And another one is from New England Bio Labs Corporate Donations Committee, awarded grade five and grade six STEAM kits for $1,999 to, sorry, to the Page School. And what is this one here? This is supplemental, so Newburyport Five Cent Bank Supplement Food Fund. Funds were raised this past winter and summer at the bank, for Newburyport's farmers market, through the local feed support, which was $103 at the high school, and $98 at the middle school. And before we vote to enter into executive session, I just wanted to mention that we're not going to be having Subcommittee meetings on January 3, 2017. But I do believe that some warrants will need to be signed. So Greg, will you be contacting? What is that going to look like? For people that, for the finance committee?
Normally, we would meet on a Tuesday, obviously. We're going to push it back, so Chris has a couple of extra days to, with all the holidays and things running around, to process what he needs. And I'm hoping everybody can just stop by my office, and sometime on Thursday, it'll just be a payroll warrant and a bill warrant, like you're seeing.
You can email us a reminder on Tuesday.
So I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position of a public authority. The chair so declares of PAT negotiations.
So moved.
All in favor?
A roll call.
A roll call? Okay, Emily?
Yes.
Yes. Deana?
Yes.
Sorry. Please, Brian?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Wayne?
And we won't be coming back.
And we will not be coming back. So I'd like to wish everybody out there, happy holidays.